hereby call this Orange Towny Zoning Commission meeting of Tuesday, June 10th, 2025 to order. Can I please have role?
Mr. McNulty.
Here.
Ms. Foster.
Here.
Mr. Bellis.
Here.
Mr. Pierce.
Here.
Mr. Avada.
Here.
All right. We are here to review zoning application Z O N dash 25 dash oh three. I believe, Robin, you've prepared a staff report, so if you want to go ahead and give us a debriefing.
Thank you, Mr. Bellis. I'll launch into it. We are here to discuss rezoning case Z O N dash 25 dash zero three. This is for property located at fifty-three fifty-one North Road. Property owner is NFMS Properties, and the applicant is Ship Properties. Property is roughly twenty-four acres, just over, and the current zoning is single-family plan residential district. The request is to amend the currently effective development plan to allow for sixty-five single-family lots, which is a reduction from the approved development plan that stands today of seventy-nine detached single-family condominiums. The one parcel in question, the twenty-four acres mentioned earlier, is on the northeast corner, northwest corner of North Road and Shanahan Road. This is the east, this is east of the existing North Farms single-family development. As stated, the applicant is requesting to amend the currently effective development plan approved under previous zoning application Z O N dash twenty-two dash zero-nine of NFMS Properties LLC. Again, we're going from single-family condominiums. Those were seventy-nine detached units that were approved in the previous plan. The proposed plan is for sixty-five single-family fee simple lots. In terms of the surrounding area, to the north is planned residential district in Berlind Township. That is part of the Evans Farm master plan subdivision. To the south is single-family plan residential district and the North Farms stub on the east side of the road. To the east is the railroad and the Jennings Sports Park at Evans Farm, and to the west is North Road and the North Farms subdivision, which is also zoned SFPRD. On the following pages of the staff report, you can see the proposed plan submitted by the applicant there with North Road on the left-hand side of the screen, and Shanahan Road on the upper portion of the screen. On the next page, you can see the layout comparison. So the left is the previously approved development plan for the seventy-nine single-family detached condos, and to the right is, again, the proposed development plan submitted by the applicant. So I'll briefly go through the summary of the changes incorporated in the amendment's request. In terms of the permitted uses, in terms of the land use, it will stay the same. It's single-family plan residential. The proposed amendment does incorporate the fee simple lots for single-family homes as opposed to the freestanding condos on HOA land. So that is the biggest change. The plan submitted show a mix of two-bedroom units and three-bedroom units, which is, despite the ownership structure, is not radically different from what was approved previously. In terms of the development standards, the applicant has proposed thirty-eight feet about in the street, sixty-two feet at the front line of the dwelling. Previously, the plan did have a divergence for lot width because it was a condominium development without the traditional single-family lots. That is, the sixty-two feet proposed is less than the SFPRD standard of seventy-five feet, which is a divergence. The lot depth is proposed to be at a hundred and twenty feet. That is less than the SFPRD standard of a hundred and thirty feet for a ten-foot divergence. The side yard setback is proposed to be at six feet. Previously, the plan had a divergence to allow residential structures to be located no closer than twelve feet minimum between units when it was approved as the condo plan, so essentially the side yard setback or the structure separation would remain the same, but that is half of, well, it's six-point-five feet less than the side yard setback of the SFPRD standard. Front setback in the text is proposed to be at thirteen feet, which is less than the thirty-foot standard setback from local roads in the Orange Township zoning resolution. And the rear yard setback proposed to be at twenty feet. Previously, there were no rear yards proposed since it is a condominium development. The rear facade-to-facade separation was proposed at forty feet, so essentially the twenty-foot rear setback is mirroring what was approved previously. However, again, it is less than the SFPRD standard of thirty-five feet. In terms of the unit count, again, the proposal is for sixty-five single-family units, which is fourteen units fewer than the previous condominium proposal. That brings the total density to two-point-seven-two dwelling units per acre. That is gross density, which is a reduction from the previously approved plan's density of three-point-two-eight units per acre. The minimum square footage for each home is proposed to be at least fifteen-hundred square feet, and the applicant is also proposing to increase the lot coverage from twenty-five percent of the lot area to fifty percent of the lot area. Again, that would be a divergence from the SFPRD code. For architectural elements, the text lists cementitious siding, smart siding, brick, brick veneer, vinyl, stone, and stone veneer as permitted primary exterior facade materials. Permitted trim materials would include wood, PVC, vinyl, cementitious trim, and aluminum. In terms of open space, the applicant is proposing to have six-point-five-six-eight acres of open space on the parcel with a total size of twenty-three-point-nine acres. That open space calculation is approximately twenty-seven-point-three-nine percent of the site. That does exceed the minimum of twenty percent, which is required by the SFPRD code. In terms of road access and connectivity, again, there are two vehicular access points as were in the previous plan. One accessing off of North Road, the other stepping in from Hipping Lane from the south side of the property. From the previous plan, there is a slight modification of the internal street layout, such that there will be two north-south roads that intersect the east-west roadway from the North Road entrance. The staff report does identify that as a private roads, private road. That is my mistake. They are proposed to be public streets. For lighting, no change is proposed from the previously approved plan. Minimal street lighting is proposed, but not major street lighting throughout the development. All lighting fixtures should have a maximum of twelve feet in height. For signage, there is no change proposed. The applicant is proposing one monument sign, which would comply with the standards of the zoning resolution. In terms of vehicular and pedestrian access, no change. Again, the two vehicular access points are unchanged, and then a ten-foot asphalt multi-use pathways would be proposed along North Road and Shanahan Road, as well as five-foot multi-use paths or sidewalks to be included internally. For landscaping, text does say that landscaping and plantings shall be similar to sheets D one and D two, which are from the previous submittal. We do recommend that the sheets be updated to match the current street layout. So again, to run through the divergences, I'll mention from the outset that these are from the base, these are divergences from the base SFPRD text and not the previously approved plan. The previously approved plan also contained approved divergences for almost all of these divergences, but just to run through them, there are seven. The first is for density, to allow two-point-seven-two units per acre instead of two per acre. For lot width, to allow for thirty-eight feet instead of seventy-five feet. For depth, lot depth, to allow for a hundred and twenty feet instead of a hundred and thirty feet. For side yard setback, to allow for six feet instead of twelve-point-five feet. And then for the front setback, to allow for thirteen feet instead of thirty feet. For rear setback, to allow for twenty feet instead of thirty-five feet. And then for maximum lot coverage, to allow for fifty percent instead of twenty-five percent. In terms of staff comments, to be fully transparent, we did make these comments last week. We did relay them to the applicant in advance of this hearing. The applicant did respond to these via email today and also provided some updated plans. Us as staff have not had time to go through those fully, but just so the commission is aware, the applicant is working on responding and updating their plans accordingly. First staff comment, we do recommend that the overall site plan be revised to include the individual lot dimensions. The site plan that was provided did not have the individual lot dimensions, which we like to see, just so that we can tell how many lots the divergences are being applied to, because it didn't seem like all of the lots necessarily required the divergences for the lot standards. There were a couple inconsistencies in the text in terms of the lot width, so thirty-eight feet versus forty-five feet versus sixty feet. That should just be cleaned up. Staff comment three is that all sheets should be revised to reflect the current street layout, particularly the landscaping plans, because some of the plans were from the previous submittal, which had the old street layout. That would affect the locations of the plantings being installed. All utility and traffic letters should be updated or removed. I believe the applicant is in the process of updating those currently. We did have some concerns that the mounding in the previously approved plan along North Road was possibly being removed. It was difficult to tell from the plans that were initially provided. The applicant has since submitted some updated plans that do show that mounding remaining in some form or fashion. We do recommend that the language be changed in response to section ten-point-zero-four A, just to clarify that home occupations are conditional uses and not permitted uses, just a minor textual detail. And then we also had some concerns that the thirteen-foot front setback might be too small if it was applied to every lot, and that might, that might not allow for proper parking in the driveway, since most cars are thirteen feet or longer. In terms of review from other agencies, the fire department has not reviewed the site plan as of yet. They will be required to approve the site plan because the street layout is changing. They'll have to review it to make sure that their trucks can make the turns and turnarounds. I believe the applicant is working on getting that submittal together, but as of yet, the fire department has not yet approved it. In terms of Delaware County regional planning, because this was an amendment to a previously approved development plan, this application was not reviewed by the full Delaware RPC. The applicant will have to go through the subdivision process following zoning approval when the technical agencies, the engineer, sanitary, Delco Water would make comments and be able to review at that time. So at this point, I have nothing further. I believe the applicant is on hand. If the commission has any questions, as am I.
All right. What I would like to do now is hear from the applicant. I'm assuming you've prepared a presentation. Please remember to state your name and address, and then after the applicant has presented, I usually open up the meeting to members of the public. Again, state your name and address. Address your comments to the zoning commission, and then we can have the zoning commission comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Mike Shannon. I'm the attorney for the applicant, the shift companies. By way of introduction, despite my youthful appearance, I've been doing this for forty-four years. I take my own life at risk by telling you that I used to regulate development in Columbus. I was the regulation development administrator and regulated zoning code and building code compliance, and I had nothing to do with Polaris. I helped negotiate that for Mayor Reinhardt with one of the toughest engineers I've ever met in my life, my life, Mr. Stoltz, the Delaware County engineer, but those are days gone by. I've been doing this in the private sector now for thirty-five years. My father actually knew Jared's grandfather, and I have represented their family for the better part of thirty-six years. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge a couple of things about Orange Township. Things have really changed. I knew a gentleman named Dick Gladman, and he gave me a lot of life lessons, and I took it willingly. Then there was another young man, Anthony Ray, that was here actually the last time I was. But this young man has been exceptional to work with. Robin, I called him a few times one day before. He was actually had some hearings that night, and I'm very old-fashioned, so I ended up stopping by. Your previous office, however, is now a different facility for the township, so I had to look up the address for the new one. I came in unannounced. He told me he was in a meeting. I said, I just stopped by, and he was nice enough to come out and give me some basic information. But more importantly, I've never seen a protocol where you have a concept meeting with planning and zoning members and Robin, and that was helpful. I think we were told from Jump Street that the previous zoning had been difficult. There was a lot of perceived and actual opposition from the neighbors. Been there, done that. It went through the full regional planning review with the county engineer and the fire agencies and the like, and that's a much more protracted review process, and that's hopefully waiting for us if we get to the final development stage. But we were cautioned that try to do those meetings with the neighbors first. It makes our job easier if they have a list of grievances instead of being against the whole development, for example, and I totally got it. So Jared has done the reach out with the neighbors. I think the attendance here this evening would show you their response. He met with the person that you gave us the name for, the, I'll call it a homeowners association, the president, and she facilitated a meeting, which she has her records of, and there were five or six people on that call with Jared. They basically indicated to him that their cause for concern last time was everything that had been done in all those phases was single-family. This was condominium. They thought, I think in their minds, condominiums are a lot closer to apartments, and they felt there'd be a diminution in value because of the proposed density of the condos. They also told Jared that they actually were concerned about the width of the streets. Being a condo development, those were going to be private streets unless I'm corrected here by staff, and it was going to be different than what they had invested their life savings in for that, what is for most of us, the largest purchase we'll make in our life. So I think they might have been relieved. We did hear some comments about the site being vacant so long that you do get rodents and things of that nature as a result, and they gave us indications that they would like to see it developed with our product vis-à-vis the condominiums. The last thing I want to point out before I get more specific is that staff is absolutely right. We did get the staff report Wednesday afternoon, like at two o'clock. We were able to make a lot of adjustments, and I'm not going to say there were clerique errors. There were more than typos, and we've tried to address staff comments. Unfortunately, our civil engineer just couldn't get the work product that we needed to reflect the proposed changes until, as he indicated later this afternoon. So I think that I can demonstrate that we were responsive, and because I left the wrong file in the car, I'm going to use my phone for a summary of some of those changes, and these would directly relate to the staff comments, which he read, and I think you had on the screen. Number one, had a staff comment had to do with the individual lot dimensions provided throughout the plan. There were inconsistencies, and that has been done, obviously, until late this afternoon. Staff comment two, there was a typo on the development plan regarding the lot width in the right of way, which had the lot width at thirty-eight feet. I believe that's been changed per the submission to sixty-two feet, and I'll double check that with staff. Staff, our comment number three, the landscape plan. We have retained the landscape architect that did the previous landscape plan for the condos. He could not accommodate a request to have it ready by this evening, and actually said he could turn it around in a week, and we could get it to staff. His name is Todd Ferris. Obviously, doing this as long as I have, I do represent an awful lot of developers. At least fifty percent use Todd for the landscaping, and some of them use him for his real skill, which is land planning. When they really don't know what they're going to do with a blank, blank site, they generally go to Todd and tell him what they think the market is, and he designs it. So we'll have him looking over our shoulder on this and also preparing that landscape plan. Again, my screen just went dark, so I put my password back in. I'm not very good at this either, so, okay. Staff comment number four was the fire department review. Again, we need a new letter from the fire department. The good news is, having been through the regulatory approvals previously, the fact that we're widening the roads, obviously changing it from a private condo development to, from a condo development to single-family, I can't foresee a set of circumstances where their position will change, but I take nothing for granted, and we need to independently contact them to confirm that. Similarly, comment number six was not clear about home occupations, and we had listed it as a permitted use. We don't know who our home occupants are going to be right now, but it should be a conditional use and not a permitted use per staff, and we changed that. And comment seven, the building footprints were pushed toward the rear. This affected the development text front and rear setbacks. I believe we have dealt with the, obviously a thirteen-foot setback, a driveway of thirteen feet. I mean, parking spaces have to be nine by eighteen, so that's not sufficient. We think we adjusted it by merely relocating the pad of the house to give us additional footage in the front and in the rear, and that was contained in the correspondence late today, and I have to have staff review that. Having said all that, I could go through the divergences, but as staff indicated, the vast majority of them you saw before. The bottom line is, is that having, I'm also a recovering politician. I was on city council and city attorney of the town that I lived in for sixteen years, which is Whitehall. There are preconceived notions about Whitehall. I was born on Whitehall Drive. I married the girl next door on Whitehall Drive. My public service, in addition to Columbus and the state, was also sixteen years in Whitehall, and my wife taught there for thirty-five years. If she were here, she would tell you the secret to being married for forty-eight years is the fact that she married the guy next door, and she still makes me live next door. Having said that, I would never want to put this commission or staff in a position to approve something that they haven't had the time to sign off on. By the same token, I am up a very significant, against a very significant deadline, and I'm going to be honest, we could suffer one tabling during this process and still make it under the gun. But what I would respectfully suggest that you consider is that instead of maybe wanting the table for that, or maybe someone you want to vote no, but if you would acknowledge what we've done to date, and I'm not sure if you've done this before, but the planning and zoning could make a condition of approval that we satisfied all of staff's comments per their presentation tonight, and the written one that we got in, in part, earlier this morning, and I think the most important part for staff to review, in all candor, didn't get here till, I know after three, I must say four, and the fact that he even looked at it and had some input on it, you don't get that in any other jurisdiction. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. Jared is, I should have introduced Arbor Homes, who we would like to be able to do this development for us, and they are here to talk if you need question and answers, and that's it, sir.
What are the, what are the general sizes of these homes you're proposing? Square footage, just, just ballpark, doesn't have to be exact.
Thirteen hundred, about six average.
Thirteen hundred?
Yes, sir.
Two bedrooms?
Two or three.
That's kind of what I figured. Okay, my, my, our only real problem with the divergences here, I don't have as much of a problem with divergences when it comes to condos, where being six feet or something less, but when you got individual, single-family homes, to me, that somewhat puts it in another category, and to still leave that at six feet. Look, I am very sympathetic to this piece of property with Jennings Sports Park and the railroad tracks, you know, so I already personally believe allowances have to be made for this piece of property, and I'm just curious about that one. I also see that you've reduced the number of units versus the condos.
Twenty percent.
Yeah, and I know the units are still about money with your, the spec, your investment, but is there anything to be done about that as far as that, that?
I'm going to, if that's okay, introduce.
Sure.
Yep. Drew Miller. I'm with Arbor Homes, fifty-four twenty-four North High Street, Worthington, Ohio. I'm sorry, but could you reiterate your question about this?
It's more, it's more a matter of, you know, the side setbacks were approved as condos, and yeah, that's, we kind of view condos differently than single-family homes. Single-family homes, yeah, you'd like to have more of a distance between those single-family homes' first side yards, and six feet seems to be very small.
Yeah, I think six feet on the surface does sound kind of small. We've got a really diverse group of neighborhoods. Arbor Homes was actually founded in nineteen ninety-four. Since then, we've built about thirty thousand homes. We're the largest home builder in Indianapolis, and we've moved over to central Ohio just in the past couple of years because we want to offer our products here. Yeah, you know, six feet on the surface, I think, does sound kind of small, and they vary, those setbacks vary widely across different jurisdictions. And so we've seen five feet is probably the lowest we've ever seen. You know, six feet is a little bit more than that, but if you imagine six feet on one side and six feet on another, you've got twelve feet there. Really, what we're finding out, we, we know our customers really well, and these days, not everybody wants a big full yard to take care of, and oftentimes, what we're finding is some of the newer, first-time home buyers are looking for less maintenance, less maintenance. So we feel six feet is appropriate.
Less maintenance, did you say?
Less maintenance, and yeah, we're confident that the, the home, the homeowners that we'd be attracting, you know, would find that desirable.
You know, I assume you, you looked at the previous divergences. Did you attempt to see whether or not your product would just work in, match as many of those divergences as possible? It seems like a lot of the divergences you're requesting, they are much more substantial than perhaps what was previously approved, but just in a general sense?
Yeah, I think we did look at them. It's, it's really challenging to switch from the condo to the single-family residential. You know, looking at the different setbacks we have and how we're going to lay out this neighborhood, you know, it would be our preference to make, to make it more dense, and so we're doing what we can here. We are reducing that amount of dwelling units. But yeah, we did attempt that when we were approached about this, this opportunity to build homes here. That was the first thing we looked at.
Just a, what I don't understand is the front yard setback, if you're saying you're going to go away from, obviously thirteen is not enough on the front yard, so you're going to go eighteen. You have a rear, rear yard setback also. You're requesting a divergence to twenty feet, so I don't understand how you're going to fit that parcel, so either not encroaching on either side. So that's my confusion. Coming back to the bigger point here, you're asking us to conditionally approve and based on staff's satisfaction, right?
Indication that we are in.
You are asking us to approve something on conditional, conditional approval without knowing the conditions.
Well, I think what we would have to do is provide stipulations that would basically be laid out in the staff report, and if we have any additional stipulations. We've done that in the past, where we've approved stuff with stipulations, but the applicant has to agree with those stipulations.
But those are, but those are specific stipulations, though?
Yes.
Specific individual. Specific individual regarding this divergence or these divergences. Here, it is being asked, even the staff doesn't know the full report at this point because it was submitted too late. So we are asking us to conditionally approve something that no one knows.
You're just a small disprove. Robin, is this even able to be settled tonight or because of what you've already received this afternoon and the changes, should it be put off to another meeting?
Yeah, because we haven't seen the revision and I think that.
Right, these gentlemen already responded to your report with everything that was there.
Yes.
We should allow that to take its place.
So I guess that's the question is, can these items be defined as stipulations or do we need to table and review another application with the revisions that you requested?
Yeah, so ultimately, that decision, that determination is up to you all as a commission. It's not up to me necessarily. What I would say is, yes, I, you know, I believe that it would be feasible for you all to, you know, if you were going to recommend approval with modifications, you could go through each of those modifications through each staff comment that I made in the staff report. However, I think because of some of the lack of detail on the site plan with the lot dimensions, that makes it difficult to determine if there would be more conditions.
Exactly.
Or what the nature of those divergences are because we don't have dimensions.
So we are being asked to approve conditionally without knowing the conditions.
Exactly.
I think it'd be better to review the plan, but.
So.
Commissioner, could you pronounce your name for me, please?
Just say Karthik. My first name is fine.
I get it, okay? And I don't wanna put this young man in that position, okay? Out of deference to the board, if two people are concerned, then I'm concerned. But I gotta say something for the record. I have not had a down zoning to decrease density in thirty years. It is unheard of, particularly when you factor in today's market. I got a call from a guy I don't know that well, but he was trying to reaffirm me some work and he said that they had a backup contract on some property in Orange Township. They thought it was gonna be condos, now it's in contract with a home builder and these, he said it was a very convoluted situation with the partnership that owned the property, but they had reached out indicating that, they had reached out to him and told him they were interested in doing multifamily and they thought that by the railroad tracks and the other limitations, they could sell it on that site and they'd be willing to pay a multifamily price for the. I kinda stopped him dead in his tracks and I had an obligation to tell my client, but I didn't have the obligation to tell this guy anything. And I said, you know, first of all, you indicated that that property owner's already in contract. I would never do zoning work on a property that's already in contract for somebody that has a backup contract because in my very conservative legal opinion, that would be tortious interference with the contract. And I, I'm not gonna trip over dollars to pick up quarters and knock on wood, in forty-four years, there hasn't been an instance where any impropriety was alleged at the bar association. So I nipped it in the bud when he said it was condos and now they're trying to do homes and now they wanna do multifamily. Very well could not be this site. I do know another site that is owned by T and R Development named Ron Sabatino and if he's trying to get that tracked, he better hold on to his assets with both hands because that's, that would be a very, very heavy lift. And I looked at that site years ago for Mr. Sabatino and told him to call Steve Cutler, who gets around a little bit more in Delaware County than me, and Steve also at that time said no thanks. So I wanna make it easy. I would agree to table and I know that it's totally up to you next time, but I would like you to be mindful that it's gonna put us up against the deadline and if we pass muster with staff, I'm hopeful that you'll agree, but I do wanna make the extra effort, particularly, Mr. Pierce, you were in the meeting and you were pretty candid about what your expectations were and you were also pretty candid about supporting your other commissioner because you don't wanna vote on something you haven't seen personally. And I wish there were some city council members around Columbus that would do that. But in any event, I wanna be respectful and if it's okay, and is there a meeting next month?
So I think we're, I think maybe we're getting a little ahead of ourselves with our tabling and continuing discussion. I, you know, I think maybe we should go through the details a little bit more if the commission has further comments and questions and then once we wrap everything up, we can come back.
So I also agree with that. I think since there's a feeling among this commission that we do not wanna write a blank check and approve something that we don't have the details on, I would suggest that we continue this hearing. We identify what those details are so you have like a list to address, not only with what Robin has already provided, but anything that this commission might also want to address. I assume there are no members of the public here that have concerns, but I will give this opportunity.
They're all for it.
They all for it.
So, 'cause I would also suggest, like I said, since you've already reached out to the public, I'm assuming your application has accommodated those comments and input. So if I may, open it to the zoning commission with questions and items that they want identified and Robin, if you could prepare a summary and then we can figure out a date to table and resume.
Can we?
I just have one question. Under the staff's comments, and I might've just mixed up what you were saying, but for number two, it said the inconsistency in the text of the lot with thirty-eight feet versus forty-five feet should be addressed. And then I thought I heard you say change to six feet, two feet. So I was confused.
I was gonna ask for clarification on that as well.
Yeah.
So, and this is one of the items that I received in the email today that did not have time to fully investigate. I believe it sounded to me at first glance that maybe that was bumping up to sixty feet or sixty-two, but it was a little unclear to me, again, did not review the full package. And again, that's why, you know, I think it's valuable to have a site plan that shows the dimensions for each individual lot because I don't think that every lot is going to be the minimum.
Okay.
And so determining how many lots are at the minimum, how many exceed that, I think is going to help the commission make a determination in, you know, how severe these divergences are and whether or not they should be improved.
Yep. And same is the case with the front and rear yard setbacks. So when they're asking divergences for both front and rear and front doesn't even meet the development standard to park four cars, then how much rear setback are we talking about here?
So having that full picture of the building envelope for each lot, I think will be key for my review purposes and then for you all to make that decision ultimately.
And then also to make sure that there's appropriate parking in the driveway. I know our standard, is it still twenty? I know we're discussing reducing it.
Oh, yeah. Yes, we typically don't measure parking spaces for single-family homes, but yes, our code is currently nine by twenty.
Nine by twenty, but just to give you an idea, and that's, I always view it from the sidewalk.
Yep.
So that someone using the sidewalk is not blocked by the vehicle with a bicycle, stroller, whatever.
I believe I did not see a sidewalk.
And that was it. So again, that's another inconsistency that, the sidewalks were referenced in the text, but we do wanna make sure that they're on the development plans also. Typically, those are shown on landscape plans rather than kind of the overall master plan and we do not have that.
Yeah. There was one landscape plan, but that was referring to the previous model, so.
If I can interject, with the landscape plan, that needs to be updated. I know you were having Todd Ferris work on it. The landscape plan that I saw in this book still had the old landscape plan where they had public amenities, like it looked like a pickleball court or something like that and maybe a few other areas. If you were doing that for this community, let us know. Also mailboxes. My understanding is now we need to have kiosk mailboxes as opposed to individual ones on the property. So where those kiosk mailboxes are gonna go and whether or not there's a drive-by parking spots, whatever, to make sure that those mailboxes are accommodated on the site plan and landscape plan needs to happen.
Thank you.
All right. I'm sure Robin can advise accordingly, but that is my understanding now in the township.
Yeah, absolutely is. No more home delivery. Those are all kiosks. If you talk to the postal service, they will tell you that exactly. So yeah, that has to be in the plan and accommodated for.
Yeah, and accommodated for.
Because it'll be a requirement. Whether you know it or not, it'll be a requirement, not from us, but from the postal service.
And realizing that people are probably gonna go by said kiosk after work, that there probably needs to be parking at least one or two spaces, however you wanna accommodate it. Not everybody's gonna go walk their dog and pick up their mail, especially if it's raining. Okay, so I would suggest the landscape plan, address those issues. The mounding that was originally on the site should be on that as well and sidewalks.
Because some of the homes are abutting the rail track, I would say the landscape plan has to have a plan. I don't know, Robin, can you remind us of what is a setback for if there is a rail line?
There is no special setback, no.
I thought the setback was established by the railroad, not by us.
They may have some standard, but I don't know that there is, I don't know that there is any restriction on this property. They may have, I don't know, unless there is an easement that exists on the property currently that I am.
Which is something that the zoning attorney, you might wanna look into.
Just wrote it there.
The other thing we need to be clear about as a zoning commission is that with all the divergences here, which I agree with, as I already told you, I think is that this is so far different than anybody else that comes in here, they're gonna, it's gonna come back to you. Hey, you did this with these folks, you did this, you did this. Guaranteed it's gonna come back and you're gonna have to have an understanding yourself as to what took place and why.
We have witnessed that before where there was a complex that was gonna be apartments that was then converted to single-family homes.
You have to be certain about that.
The difference being there, I think they already had some of the infrastructures provided. Here, there's no infrastructure. On the flip side, for me, it's you're reducing the number of units and you're going from condos to single-family, which appears to be more palpable to the neighbors.
This is what the neighbors wanted, I'll be honest with you. I think this last thing that you're changing it from was the third one. First two had been, had not been approved because you've already done your work, good for you, great job, go and talk to neighbors, go work this out, let them know what you're doing. That was perfect. That served you probably better than you know because they were completely opposed to every other thing. They were always insisting, we like, want single-family homes. We spent a lot of money, here's our neighborhood, we want this to be the same. You're building smaller homes, but still single-family. I think all is good and that's obviously worked out.
And if I recollect, the neighbors' understanding when they purchased their property was that this would be single-family homes.
That was already approved. That's already, that's already in the plan was single-family homes for that piece of property. So you fit right in with the plan.
Was it Rockford?
It was, part of it was Rockford.
He's lying through there a couple times with Rockford.
Yes, so part of it was Rockford, but it was a, my understanding was, and I'm sure Robin could try to pull up the old zoning books if he had time, that it was a joint partnership between Rockford and some others. Rockford fulfilled and built on their assigned lots, but I believe the other members of the partnership did not.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just leave it at that from recollection.
I just have an addition. I just have one additional question for Arbor Homes. Where are some of your homes now, built now, that you have standing?
So I guess the closest neighborhoods would be in Plain City. We have a development, a couple of developments out there right now that work on it. Maran Reserve is the newest one. I think there's maybe only four homes built there so far.
Oh, Plain City?
Yep. But we've got, as far away from our central Ohio office here, we've got a development down in Washington Courthouse, which is probably the furthest one, but we're looking, exploring opportunities in West Jefferson and Hilliard and Delaware.
Thank you.
Could you wait for just a moment? So the architectural elements that are listed here, is it just, you hadn't decided or is it just a combination of, or what's the thought here?
Yeah, so part of the Arbor Homes process, home buying process, is we allow the customers to choose those options. So they can really, they have an effect on the affordability of the house.
And then the other thing on the elevations here, I mean, you said it's about thirteen hundred square foot, all of these are?
Sixteen.
Yeah, eighteen hundred.
Minimum is sixteen hundred.
Yeah, thirteen is probably the lowest then. They go up, I think maybe twenty-three hundred is the largest.
Okay. Lowest here is sixteen hundred and the highest here is thirty-two hundred, what we see here.
So you, do you have a product that's thirteen hundred that, that shows that elevation?
We do.
If what the shared here is, the lowest one is sixteen hundred, I was looking for the thirteen hundred story, trying to see what it looks like.
So what we propose in here is our traditional Arbor line. We do have another line of houses that is called our rival product. They're a little bit smaller, a little bit more affordable. We'll try to fit those in where we can. I know there's been some discussion about the setbacks and, you know, there could be a potential for us to put in a smaller unit if we can achieve something there, but what we've proposed and what you're seeing there is just our traditional Arbor Homes.
So on the architectural side, when you, when we see the product again, if you can show us the complete list?
Yeah, the full range, especially if you're having to adjust the footprint size based on setbacks for parking or, you know, trying to diminish the number of divergences and stuff like that. If you could just show us the full range of like the smallest.
To the largest.
To the largest. I mean, I understand, yeah, some of these are options of whether or not they wanna, you know, a finished room above the garage or whatever, you know, or a sunroom, but just so we know that you have a product that will fit in the footprint provided by your site plan.
Yep.
And I would also point out that the way the text is drafted currently, the minimum square footage is proposed to be fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred.
So if thirteen hundred is an option, then revise the text accordingly.
Yes, and make, exactly. Make sure that the text and the graphics match.
Okay, yep, we can do that.
So that your smallest footprint in the text is the smallest unit you're providing graphics for.
Right, yeah, and I think it would really help for us to look at each individual, look at each individual lot and understand what exactly we fit there.
Have you already reached out to the township fire department since you, I don't know, when you got the staff's comments or anything?
I'd have to check with Eric Sartner, my partner who's been doing all this work on the application as well as our civil. I know once I got the staff report, it went to the top of the list. Thank you. And Madam Chair, I would like to take credit for a meeting with the neighbors, but I think you were there. We were not asked to meet with the neighbors, we were told.
I would like to, highly encouraged is what I would. I would like to, highly encouraged is what I would like to. I'm looking through my notes to see if I have anything, again, you'd want new utility letters on the checklist as well, but that Robin already has. Does the commission have any other questions or items they feel should be addressed?
No, I don't have any additional.
Carthick, are you good too? I'm trying to figure out how best to phrase some of the divergences, because there is our single-family, like Dennis said, there's our single-family standard zoning where you're requesting divergences from that, but you're going from condo back to single-family, so I don't know how to say, this is what the zoning code requires, this is what the previous approval had, and this is then our modification of that. I don't know, Robin, if you have any ideas, how best to try to make that clear, not only to the zoning commission, but to other members of the public to understand that we're reducing the number of units, but because we're going from condo to single-family home, the setbacks and the open space, or the public open space is considered differently.
Yeah, I, and I can try to make that clear in my next version of the staff report and just try to lay those out in terms of how you're evaluating it as a commission and as decision-makers, I'd say there's no exact science to it. It is a bit more of an art, because you do have the SFPRD standards.
Exactly.
Which is in our zoning code, you also have, you know, the, the benefit or the, the not benefit of looking at what was previously approved.
Approved.
And trying to synthesize conclusions from those.
Exactly, as Dennis brought up.
Yeah, yeah. And I, of course, we recognize that similar to what Dennis said, that divergences would be needed, but maybe, maybe approvable, but it seems like the, since it's going to the single-family story, maybe that's the side we lean on to say, okay, we have to evaluate in, in light of that, as if the product has changed itself.
Or I would say, like you said, that we're going from the condo to single-family, but also we're reducing the number of units, which I think would definitely help public perception, because it's not as a dense development as it was previously laid out, even though there, there might be divergences.
And Madam Chair, that also addresses something that Commissioner McNulty brought up. Obviously, you do have to be worried about precedent. And in this particular case, the winds that you're looking through is going from a condominium, which had a lot of opposition, to a single-family home. If that situation presents itself again, maybe they'd have something to argue, that you did it for this, you should do it for us. But I, for most part, those would be perceived as downzonings and maybe positive. So I just thought I'd throw that out there, because you're right, precedents are precedents, but if you can distinguish, I mean, every case is different for one reason or another. Again, I wasn't being lighthearted, I can't remember going in and getting my density reduced, that's just not what developers do. And I gotta think that it's, they were able to make this pencil out despite that, I mean, we obviously tried to go for eighty and it just didn't work. So what did work created divergences that we tried to address, but it doesn't do any good if you haven't seen it yourself. And again, Robin, I guess I can't even believe he had actually read it prior to this evening. I was going to come in, having done this before, I, I thought I'd come in and request the tabling so that time could, but you at least gave us the opportunity to not waste your time hopefully, but to tell you how much we've done so far. And again, they've been good, we got it late Wednesday and then we didn't get it to them until today and that's on us, not him. So we'll make sure it doesn't happen again next time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the commission have any other comments?
No additional comments.
All right, what are we looking like if we're going to table this?
So to be clear, I would recommend not a true tabling, but a continuation of the hearing, just to make it a little easier for everybody.
To date and time, yes.
Yeah, so continuing to time, date, place certain. So I think part of that is asking the applicant, how much time do you feel that you need to get all your ducks in a row and, and provide us with a, a complete package so that we can evaluate accordingly.
We'll be ready for the next meeting. Most of our ducks nested this afternoon, but we've got some work to do.
Okay, so are we talking a month?
Yes.
Okay, when is our next schedule?
So, so next, next scheduled date would be June twenty-fourth, beyond that, we could look at July eighth.
June twenty-fourth is two weeks.
So that would give you essentially one week to get everything together and submit at least one.
Exactly. We have meeting on the seventeenth already. I might suggest that's a little.
Too tight.
Too tight. And that the eighth might be better.
Yeah, the eighth, I, I don't know if I will be here, but.
Well, if he's not going to be here, we'll do it on the eighth.
I would just remind you that if he's not here and we're a hung application, the application does not proceed, is my understanding.
We wouldn't get an alternate member in.
Okay.
We have to go to the twenty-fourth, because I just did my white hole math, and by the time we get to the trustees, it wouldn't be timely in terms of our contract. So I will be here and we'll try to have the engineer here as well and get all this stuff to Robin.
Is it twenty-fourth or?
What date?
So if, if we have it on the twenty-fourth, what's the deadline for?
That would be next Tuesday, the seventeenth.
The seventeenth, so do you think you can get everything together by the seventeenth?
My client does and I'm working for him, so. I'll give it my best shot and if we're, if we're not compliant within a week, I'll have to deal with the consequences. I understand the position they're in, so, but thanks for the flexibility. Are you, I don't want to, do you have any vacation, are you out?
I just got back from vacation.
We're good, thank you. I didn't want to come in too much.
Yes.
Is it twenty-fourth?
The twenty-fourth, are you available?
Yeah, I'm not going to be here, but he can get an alternate. I'll be out.
They can arrange for alternate members if.
Right.
Dennis, are you going to be here?
I'm always here.
Okay, I will, I will be here on the twenty-fourth. You will not be?
I will.
Okay, is that still acceptable? We'll have one new member.
Vote, but that's too gone, right? You have three?
You'll have, you'll have two regular members who will not be in attendance.
Yes.
Okay, and how many votes are required for passage? Three.
Three.
Right, so you'll have them?
Yeah. No pressure, you can do that.
Okay, are you sure? Okay, then can I have a motion to continue the zoning application meeting for Z O N dash twenty-five dash oh-three to Tuesday, June twenty-fourth at six-thirty PM at the Orange Township?
Second.
Mr. McNulty?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Trabellus?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Avadilla?
Yes.
Thank you, all right. And then, not to put pressure on Robin, if you could get these numerous notes and comments distributed, even though the applicant has taken notes, that might be helpful?
Sorry, Ms. Trabellus, before we go further, one point of clarification, or one question for you all, for updated plans, do you want a hard copy version or is digital?
Digital.
If you want hard copy, it's fine.
I'd like a hard copy, please, yeah.
I still like hard copies. I can give, I can give you this one and you can just swap everything else.
That's the plan here, is to leave this here for you, you can.
Because I still take old-fashioned notes, if that is acceptable. I believe we have other business before the commission. I'll be honest, I have not looked at the latest meeting minutes, because I haven't been available, but do we still want to review them?
I'm comfortable with stating.
All right, can I have, Dennis, are you good with the minutes?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I move that we accept the May thirteen, twenty-twenty-five zoning twenty-five dash two minutes.
Second minute.
Mr. McNulty?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Ms. Trabellus?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Avadilla?
Okay, so the minutes have been approved, any other new business before the commission?
So just a brief update on our meeting next week, so I am fast and fiercely working on updates to the new zoning code, I'm hoping to have those done tomorrow. So I'm hoping to get physical copy out to you by Thursday. I know it's not a ton of time to review, but we'll try to go through all the changes since our previous version and then meet and discuss that next week. Again, you will have the same options as you always do to approve, approve with modifications or hopefully not deny, but we could, if, if the commission so chose, we could continue that to a later date if you feel that we need more time. But hoping to have those to you in a few days, so appreciate your patience on that.
Bye.
Thank you.
I think you still have some of my architecture dictionaries.
They are sitting on my desk, I believe I'm done with them, but I'll hold on to them until next week.
You can hold on to them until next week. I'll give you a reminder that a facade technically refers to the primary elevation, not all sides of a building, those are faces.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right.
Do you have anything else?
Anything else? All right, meeting concluded.
Thank you.
Until next week.
Thank you.
I noticed that in your.